You ready, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Please stand and join the federal allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our September 28th County Commissioners Business Meeting. We will open our meeting with public comment on any subject not on the agenda and that the Commissioner has jurisdiction over. Any public comment?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Tim Rabindall. Been out of the loop here for a couple of weeks, and I've been busy, and I just wanted to come in and give you guys a new development. I have opened up a business registered with the Secretary of State on behalf of the people of Montana, Conservative News from Montana. And we are going to expand into having a better coverage for the people of Montana. And I'm, like I say, it's a registered business, so I would like to have this commission know that not only will I be helping read out news as usual and assisting our local paper of record, but I will be also here on behalf of my own business, Conservative News from Montana. That's just an update for you. I've been out on the field getting things in order, and I thank you for your time and your indulgence.
All right. Congratulations, Tim, on your new adventure. Any more public comment?
Yes, sir. My name is John Grayard. I represent myself as well as our business, Stonehouse Distillery. I understand sadly that last Monday, there was a item on the agenda directly addressing myself, my person, as well as our business. This is directly related to the Muffley Lane Road issues, specifically to what they call the Winston Mine, Gold Mine, whatever. Couple of things. If I may direct your attention to the rules set forth by the Broadwater County Commission. It says the request to be on the agenda shall include the topic and details of the issue to be considered. It also says that anybody addressing the Commission must remain civil. There should be, in other words, no trashing of anybody. My main concern, and I'm going to put this lightly, is the mine, and I have, if you'd like, I don't know what the rules are, but I printed out some information about the people running the mine. All the people in charge, and I listed them in order, it's a Canadian company, and it's run by people coming from Colorado, Washington, Idaho, Oregon. These people are coming here into our community, inflicting themselves into our lives, and addressing the Commission and using our resources and our administrative boards to intimidate and trash us. I'm very dismayed that it was allowed to go on. I watched part of the video that was taken last Monday. I watched it as much as I could stomach it. The agenda said that they were going to talk about, basically introduce to you a plan about the mine, ask for an easement. I didn't hear much of it. All I heard, it was basically a slugfest about me, about trying to intimidate us into basically going away. This ties directly into, and I'm not mentioning any names because I don't want to do what they did, but you're all aware of the illegal tire dump, the toxic tire dump that has developed at the end of Muffley Lane. The owner of that property has leased or is leasing currently the property to the mine. They established a lease July, six years ago, so we've been dealing with these people for six years. We've been intimidated, we've been threatened, we've had property destroyed. In fact, I can, as one of the prime examples, I can give you one of the mine supervisors, Dave Whitley, who was on the agenda, actually, I didn't hear him because, like I said, I couldn't stomach it anymore. He identified to me that his son was the one that actually came in front of our property at one point, slowed down, revved up his engine so as to get my wife's and my attention, then rolled down his passenger window as he was leaving the mine and waving at us. And my wife was very happy, and she says, "Oh, look, he's a nice guy, he's waving at us." And I said, "Count the fingers." It was one, it was a middle finger. At which point, he floored his truck and literally kicked up gravel and dust over us so we had to go inside and take a shower. I have warned these people that the neighborhood is not going to stand for it, that we will organize and take our road back. The road, whoever doesn't know, is a gravel road built up out of mine tailings years ago. We have no idea what kind of poisons are in it because in those years when the mine was run, they were allowed to use arsenic and cyanide, whatever garbage they were using. So we don't know what we're breathing. We have tried to contact any state and federal agency, but they have figured out to use their small miners exemption, and therefore it's more or less hands-off for a lot of agencies. I have petitioned everybody that I could to help us out, to no avail at this point. So we have, I have it in writing here, and the county attorney is aware of it, from one of the county employees, I have an email stating that this is a private road. Now that this is being disputed, well, at this point, I was assured by the county that we have the legal right to implement any restrictions on the road. I specifically ask, are we allowed to enforce any weight restrictions? I was told yes. I was told this was unheard of before, this was new, which did not make it illegal, so we did. At my own expense, I went out after meeting with the neighborhood residents, property owners, and I had signs made. And I posted the five mile, I'm sorry, the five-ton weight limit. That's when everything went downhill. This was about, what, two weeks ago? This is when things started. Now, apparently, I was in court this morning. I was charged with criminal mischief. As an ex-police officer, I have never, ever been charged with anything. I've never been accused or convicted of any crimes. So now, this morning, I had to answer a charge of criminal mischief. As of the day when the sign went up two weeks ago, miners are claiming they're to find spikes. You heard all this? I'm just repeating it for the record. They've been, that were spiking the road. All of a sudden, they've been there for six years, all of a sudden, we're spiking the road, we're doing all kinds of bad things, and you were here, you heard it verbatim when these guys were off. Apparently, I'm the weirdest crackpot now, and threatening them. Oh, here's my favorite, the intimidation was firearm. You recall that? That they had some kind of a meeting or whatever, and at this, at which point, I was target shooting towards them. I have not fired a shot in anger or otherwise in about two years. Well, I correct that, I shot a rat, which came probably out of the mine, with a .22. It was one shot, but they had burst of gunfire directed at them. Now, I will leave this with you, you do whatever you want. There is a website of people that have been through the same, and they have organized, and it lists, for instance, common mining company tactics, lawsuit and trumped-up charges. This is one of it. They want to intimidate us, they want to bully us, and this is their main thing. What I would like to do, what I would like to petition the Commissioners, because I have received phone calls, and in fact, somebody just approached me on the street, and he heard about what happened here last Monday, that went on unimpeached, that people are trashing our personalities and our business. This was allowed, I'm sorry to lay this on you, but this was allowed to go on during an open commission meeting totally away from the agenda, and it is posted for the public to see. I cannot have it that we've been working, we've had the distillery for seven years. We've been good stewards, we've been good neighbors, we've donated for every cost, everybody that comes in and wants a donation, I don't know how many ambulances supposedly I've bought. Okay? Three times, three times in a row, three years, people came in to, for me to donate for an ambulance. I donate. And then I have out-of-state, out-of-country people coming in, trashing me on an open public forum, and nobody is stepping up. According to your own rules, you all signed on it, and I'm very upset, as you probably can tell. I looked it up, it's listed under Broadwater County, so by default, you own that. Broadwater County is putting that video on, was allowing somebody to trashing my name, my wife's name, and my business name. I'm asking you to have somebody, I don't know how you would do it, to redact it, to bleep it out. I don't want my name to be trashed in my county, that I'm voting, that I'm living, I'm dealing with neighbors and donating and doing all kinds of good things, and have these people come out and trash me in an open forum, and it's allowed to stand in public. I'm asking you to take that off. I don't know how you do it, like I said, and I think I spoke my piece. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you.
Can I leave this with you?
Sure.
I have some information that you might find interesting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Gary Schorer, S-C-H-O-E-R. I have property at Winston, and I currently live in Shepherd, or outside of Shepherd, Montana, Yellowstone County. A few weeks ago, I was in and presented my case, if you will, on closure of a piece of alley through one block in Winston. It separates some property that I currently own. It also separates property owned by Winston Cattle Company or the Deal family, and was, as much as anything, wondering where that stood at this time. I was hoping that it would be a fairly short process to get that piece of alleyway closed. Rick, not Rick, but Matt Deal signed off on the petition that we have presented, and again, is, like I said, as much as anything, wish to find out where that stands at this time.
Because I don't have an answer for you. I know that our county attorney is working on it, and that's probably the person you're going to have to talk with at this point.
Corey?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? All right, hearing done, we'll move on with our agenda. I have the minutes from September 21st, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes from September 21st, 2020. Is there any public discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, Lake Vista Subsequent Minor Subdivision, Lot Number Five.
Good morning. I'm Bernadette Swenson from Shawbro Surveying. I don't have anything new to report, unfortunately. The landowner's engineer was out of town till Friday and reached out to the county engineer to make a plan, and the county engineer was out of the office on Friday. So they're supposed to meet up today to look into the issues with the road and your concerns. In the meantime, the landowner is, he has contracts with construction company, so right now, as it stands, he does have an approved residential lot of 20 acres. So his plan of action was to go ahead and start building one single residence with an approved, there's an existing well, an approved septic site there. Worst-case scenario, if this subdivision was never approved, he still has his approval for a 120-acre parcel.
Okay.
So that's just an update on the plan.
Sure. Now, I guess, how does that affect the subdivision if it's approved, and how will that?
It would be just built on one of the proposed lots, using the DEQ-approved system for that lot. Right now, the DEQ approval for the five, or seven lots, does use the existing well with a septic, so they're just going to choose that house site to start construction.
All right, very good. Well, hopefully, they'll get together, and I think it's probably a relatively simple fix.
Right, yeah. Leave that to the engineers to put their heads together, and hopefully, you know, we'll have some information this week.
All right, well, keep us posted. I mean, we want to make that approval as soon as we can for you guys.
No problem. That's, you know, he just, the landowner just figured, you know, giving time to get everything done, at least he could get one contractor going.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for the update. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and take care of our mail, and I'll go from there. Let's see, received a letter from the Forest Service on the Elk Smith Project, and they are, there's a comment period for that project. And I looked up to see what that was about, because I wasn't aware of what it was about. It's a 10,000-acre prescribed burn 15 miles southwest of Augusta as a result of the 1988 Canyon Creek fire. So if you're interested in that, you can, this will be on file, you can make comments. We received the water sampling from the silos, and it all came back as absent. I had the opportunity last week to meet with Senator Dade, representative of this area, and he dropped off some information on a, it's called the Emergency Wildfire and Public Safety Act of 2020. He is working on a bipartisan bill with Diane Feinstein out of California, and proposing some changes to the way we manage wildfire and reduction of the damage afterwards, so some good information here if you're interested in that. We received a check for $146,987.26, which is our quarterly entitlement share payment. Magazine from the Montana Preservation, and they are, got some great projects they're working on, Wastewater Digest, and some Equipment Solutions, and Rural Montana Magazine. I'll be on file in the Commissioner's office if you're interested in that. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our 10:30 agenda item. Nicole?
Good morning.
Good morning, Nicole.
I am Nicole Brown in the Community Development Department. I'm here today to present an amendment to our Broadwater County subdivision regulations. This is a one-page amendment. This amendment was posted on the county website. The notice of public hearing was published in the Broadwater Reporter 32 days before our planning board public hearing. So this amendment is to Appendix L Noxious Weed Management Plan. The purpose of this amendment is to give the Broadwater County Weed Department and Broadwater County Weed Board, more specifically, more latitude to be able to make amendments to the weed plan. So this is taking the actual weed plan itself out of the subdivision regulations and replacing it with this statement that states, "All proposed subdivisions shall provide a weed management plan approved by the Broadwater County Weed Board prior to the subdivision application being considered finalized by the Broadwater County Planning Department and Broadwater County Commissioners. The Broadwater County Weed Coordinator is the local department providing guidance on the Noxious Weed Management Plan to the proposed subdivision." The amendments to that weed plan were discussed in November of 2019 by the Broadwater County Weed Board and approved by this commission on December 31st, 2019. So this is just closing that loop. So the weed plan will now be out of the subdivision regulations, but replaced with a statement that they still must create and conform to a weed management plan.
Okay. So I guess, you know, Nicole, you and I talked about this, can I maybe give an example of how that worked in the past and how this streamlines the process?
So just to go back a little, we used to, in our 2001, I believe, subdivision regulations, we had the weed, or the fire plan in our regulations, and we realized that that wasn't very fair to the fire boards if they had to make any minor amendments or anything, that they would have to go through this whole process of amending the regulations. So that's kind of how we're viewing this amendment now with the weed plan, giving the control, if you will, that's probably not the right word, because it will still go through the Commissioners, but giving the weed board the latitude to be able to make their amendments as necessary, instead of going through this public hearing process with the planning board and amending the regulations. So this new weed plan, it's a little more extensive than what we have in our current regulations, but in speaking with our county weed coordinator, that's the direction she would really like to see us going as a county.
All right. Your life is a great idea. You have any questions?
No.
Laura, do you have any questions?
No, thanks, Gerald.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the amending of Appendix L for the Noxious Weed Management Plan.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to Appendix L for the Noxious Weed Management Plan. Is there any public discussion? Any discussion? Okay, hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Teresa can't make it today, she, we did have a new COVID case, so she's doing a contract tracing on that, and she's busy with giving flu shots and deliverables for some of her other grants. So this public health, the PEP stands for Public Health Emergency Preparedness, and it's a cooperative agreement that provides assistance to public health departments across the nation. This helps health departments build and strengthen their abilities to effectively respond to a wide range of public health threats, including infectious disease, natural disasters, biological, chemical, nuclear, and radiological events. So what's happened here is, this pandemic has identified some areas of concern, and the purpose of this grant and its amendments are to ensure that communities are ready to respond to emergencies, both those they expect and those that come without warning. And I think that we realize that our public health is being taxed to its limits in this small, little county, and Teresa's doing a fantastic job for what she has to work with. I guess I'd kind of like to do a personal plea to anybody out there that would be interested, retired nurses or whatever, to come help us out. We're in desperate need of someone to help us in our public health. We know that there's a lot of work to do in the future, so if you know someone out there that would be willing to, we got the money to pay you, we just need the help. And it's not just us, it's statewide. I did a search for LPNs here a couple of weeks ago, because we're still trying to hire a new LPN, and there was 375 jobs in the state of Montana for LPNs. So anyway, once again, we kind of need your help. So one of the requirements of, in this amendment, is to possibly, I don't know how they do, they do half to one FTE, but people with, or I mean, populations of 5,000 to 20,000 for a jurisdiction such as ours, they're requiring someone to be hired to administrate that grant. And so that is, that is one of the requirements of this grant. And there is also money available in there for hiring the people we need to help us. Anyway, I guess that's all I have on this grant. I wish Teresa was here to explain a little bit more about it, but it's a grant that we already currently but it's a grant that we already currently have, and these are just amendments that have come down in this task order from the state. You guys have anything else you'd like to add?
This is just an update, isn't it? We generally sign a 10-year PEP Task Order, and then we re-sign, re-approve on an annual basis. That's what this is, correct, or is it actual amendment?
This is an actual amendment to the annual one that we sign.
Okay.
Yep.
I hope we signed the PEP Task Order amendment as presented. This is too important not to.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to sign the PEP Grant Task Order. Any public discussion?
Is this more of a plan preparation?
Come up, come on up here. Introduce yourself, please.
Sorry.
Tim Poole.
Yep.
Is this a creation of a plan type thing, or is it actual implementation of?
It'll, well, it'll be, it'll probably maybe be for a little bit of both because this preparedness is involving all of our agencies, and probably Incident Command will probably be a portion of that. And so we're planning for whatever disaster that we know of. Of course, obviously, we know of our pandemic at the moment, but things that we don't know of, that, so that's what this might be used for.
Little clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other public discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. All right, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so you guys are up.
Oh.
Good timing.
Time to get your breath. I guess I'll do the intro, and then I'm gonna hit over Bert.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, Corey.
So I think I've talked, I know I've talked to the commission about this a couple of times and sent some documents. I don't know if we've ever talked about it much in a public meeting, but there's been a long history of discussion the past several years about a new copper mine being established in Mar County. It's called the Black Butte Copper Mine. And I believe they've had some representatives from the mine that have come down and talked to the commission about infrastructure and things like that. So the Montana DEQ granted the permit for the mine, and we knew what was going to happen, and it happened. Environmental group sued to stop it. And it's kind of a unique thing in that they're challenging the permit, but they haven't asked for an injunction at this point. So they haven't asked for court orders to stop the actual moving forward on the progress. And so I'm, Bert's gonna talk in a minute about kind of where things are right now. But this mine, in the event that it successfully goes through, is going to be really productive economically for Broadwater County and Mar County and the surrounding area, not only for employment purposes, but there's going to be some other revenue that the counties are going to receive. And so we certainly see it as a positive thing. We also see it as a positive thing in terms of the environmental protections that they have in place are not going to damage the Smith River. That was kind of the big concern, is there a threat to the Smith River? Well, the group sued two different entities. They sued the mine itself, and then they also sued Montana DEQ. The, I've discussed at length with Mar County Attorney Bert Hurwitz, who's here today, about the idea of the, whether any parties would intervene in support of the mine project. And I believe Mar County has already voted to authorize intervening in the lawsuit as a, basically as a defendant intervenor in support of the mine project going forward, in support of the mine permit being upheld by the court. And it makes sense, in my view, for Broadwater County to join as another county as a defendant intervenor, basically as a partner with Mar County, because this is a big issue for our future. And, you know, frankly, we've had, we've had a lot of battles in the past, you know, several decades of successful natural resource industry projects that have been damaged or harmed or even shut down because of environmental litigation. And we know about the timber mill here that has had to shut down, and a great part of their reason for shutting down has been the lack of enough timber to run their mill because of environmental lawsuits stopping timber sales. And so in that regard, what I've suggested to Mr. Hurwitz is if the county would be willing to join as a partner and another defendant intervener with Mar County. Now, having said all that, in my prior life, before I became a prosecutor, I did a lot of environmental law. I've done a lot of these lawsuits, more federal than state lawsuits on environmental issues. There are a lot of work. There are a big time commitment, there are a lot of, there are a lot of time. So we've, we've kind of worked out this arrangement where Bert would do all the work, and I would just cheer him on from the sidelines. No, we joke, so a couple of years ago, I was over in Mar County and did a case with Bert that was a very big criminal case, and we took it to trial, and we won. And I've been just looking for the chance for Bert to pay me back ever since then. So, so I, and he also has done a lot more homework on this case than I have. And so, but I think we do have the idea that we're going to be co-counsel on the case, but Bert will be lead counsel on this, and I will, I will help where I can, and I'll cheer on from the sidelines when, if my workload, or if we've got the upcoming Barris trial, for example, if that takes me off. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce Bert Hurwitz, the Mar County Attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is my first time in front of the Broadwater Commission, so thank you for getting me on your agenda, I appreciate it. I handed out the resolution that our commission passed earlier this spring directing me to intervene on behalf of development of the Black Butte Copper Project. At that time, the lawsuit hadn't been filed. It was just something that we knew was coming down the pike. And so since that time, I've been working with the council for all parties on this. You have the complaint there, which is what started the litigation. They have a lot of claims, but primarily, the county's role in this is to defend the private property owner's right to develop their natural resources. So what's unique about the Black Butte Copper Project is this is 100% on private ground. It's not on federal ground, it's not on state ground, it's on a private landowner's ground. It's a all-underground mine project. And if you haven't had an opportunity, if you have some time, they do offer public tours to go and see how they're going to do it. And they've actually started construction in the last two weeks on some of the surface projects that will go for between six and nine months, depending on what kind of winter we have where they'll be working on the surface, doing roads and buildings and different things. And then sometime next summer, they'll start underground, depending upon how this litigation turns. Now Cory's correct, at this time, we all operated under the assumption that there would be an injunction filed as soon as they received their permit from the state, which, by the way, is kind of interesting. It's one of the first new permits for a mine in decades. There's been expansions for mines and different things, but this is a brand-new mine, brand-new permit, and it was the first in decades. It was issued, they had a bonding process, they squared all of that, and were able to start construction just a couple of weeks ago. So now it is actually going. In talking with council for the environmental groups, it's called Earth Justice out of Bozeman. There's five different environmental groups. They are trying to avoid filing a preliminary injunction if they can. They want to get all the issues kind of four-square in front of the judge, who will be our judge in Mar County. He's actually, in our district, is out of Roundup. His name is Judge Spalding. And we had a scheduling conference with him last week, and it was pretty funny. He said, you know, "What you folks don't understand is how great it is, or how freeing it is that no matter what decision I make, I know it's going to be appealed." So it was kind of an interesting thing. But what the parties are primarily chewing on, so it's council for the DEQ has provided the record last week. And what the record is, is they have their final EIS that says, yes, you can do the mine. And then the record is all of the emails and public comments and all of the scientific work and everything that undergirds all of that. And so that's just been produced, and they're starting to go through that. Our role is really to talk about the economic development for the county, the number of jobs, the taxes from, there's a couple of different ways that these copper tailings will be taxed, and so how that flows through and benefits the people of Mar County and central Montana as a whole is kind of what we'll be arguing about in this. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to have as many local government entities that are willing to join in with us. And Cory's correct, I do owe him big time. And so I will be doing the, primarily doing the day-to-day work on this and consulting with Cory based on his experience and doing those kind of things. So it's just a guy I can bounce ideas off of going forward. But I think it also makes a difference to the judge to see that it's not just Mar County, it's some of our neighboring counties as well. So if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to entertain them about the litigation and what's going on. There's a lot to talk about. I'm not sure how much you want to be bombarded with at this time, so I'd take your questions first, or I can continue monologuing.
I guess my question is, is if this is something that we've decided to do, I mean, I understand Cory's role in all this, but how will this help you guys in the future?
So in the future, so what we're dealing with right now is the claims that the environmental groups have brought. They point out in their complaints and things that, you know, will be detriments to the county in terms of roads, housing, the kinds of stresses that people see in boom-and-bust sort of economies. And so what we want to be able to show is that not only are we planning for that, taking those things into account, but all of the benefits that will flow from the increased ability to, you know, provide for our students, provide for our deputies that are, you know, enforcing our laws, which we have, we have just three sheriff's officers, including the sheriff, in our county. So they're only on one at a time in our county, and it's, they're stretched very thin. And so with the ability to have these extra resources from natural resource development, we're able to function without taxing our property owners to the fullest extent, which is kind of the way that we've been operating since the, you know, our mills shut down back in the 70s. It's have been the kind of project that we have been looking for as a county to try and do since then. So with Cory's help, it sort of is a, it's a literal weight in cases. So our arguments are the same, but it's just adds, you know, an additional local government that can point to the developments, which there are going to be in terms of housing and jobs and folks coming through Broadwater County as well. And so some of the impacts are going to be the same as well. So having a seat at the table to say, "This is what we need," I think is important for Broadwater County.
How long do you anticipate something like this? I mean, that's probably a loaded question, but.
Given the, the way the litigation is shaping up right now, I think there, we're moving, everybody is sort of agreeing and moving forward in as aggressive a posture as possible. I don't intend to slow that down. I want this to, I want there to be a good decision in our local district court, which I think we can get, and then to move as fast as we can to the Supreme Court. You know, it's impossible to say with any certainty what that's going to take. The, there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one has been COVID, you know, so we had criminal jury trials, and all of the judges' civil docket, you know, were sort of, when it wasn't clear whether we'd be able to have jury trials or how we're going to be able to do them, earlier this spring, a lot of things were continued, and now they're stacking up on the court's docket. So this fall, we're dealing with cases that are on a third and fourth setting, so. And that's pretty common with your district court, where you have, where you share with Helena, that has, you know, is one of the busiest district courts in the state. Ours is not, we're this, you know, four little counties in central Montana, but even our judge is scheduling things in three dimensions at this point, trying to get to, get through some of these cases. So that's going to be a delay in just getting his ability to hear something and to get something written out. And the second thing is just, you know, once it's in front of the Supreme Court, we really don't have any control over, they take what they take, and the decision takes what it takes. And so it's, we can argue that, you know, it needs to be made faster, but that really is up to the judge at that point. One of the good things, though, with it, with their posture right now of not filing a preliminary injunction, you know, we're able to, the company is able to continue work. They were able, part of their requirements from the state is to deposit a bunch of, it's a, they're basically tax prepayments into an escrow account for the, for the city and the county and the school district. And so that was, that was done so that we can start, we're using that money for a planner, subdivision regulation review, and those kind of things. So those are moving forward in tandem. So the good news is that they're able to move forward, but the litigation, just, it takes what it takes.
Will they continue to be able to do what they're doing now through this process?
We don't know, but right now, yes.
Yeah.
At any point, the, they can change their mind and say, okay, it's gone too far, or there's other impacts that they're seeing, and they can move for a preliminary injunction at that time. But it gets harder for them to do that because one of the tests that they have to do is, the judge has to do, is weigh the relative harms. And so now, the company is able to say, look, we've got this crew out there, we've mobilized all these things, we're, you know, we've spent all this money, we're down the road a ways, it would be much more harmful to stop now than it would have been before they started. So as the, the longer that goes, the harder I think it will be for the judge to order a stop to all work. But anything's possible, and it can happen at any time.
Sure. Okay. I don't have any other questions, do you?
No, I don't have any.
Laura, do you have any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
Bert, thank you for coming over. I don't know how much of the history you know. Your dad knows quite a bit.
Right.
But the Broadwater County Commission has been supportive now for years, which he may have shared with you. We've been over to White Sulfur Springs a number of times. We've met with the Samfire Black Butte leadership, was Tintina back then, when we started, and then changed names. So I'm not sure which name to use now. So I may just jump between the three, just so that I don't get confused.
That's okay, there's only one project like that in, there's only one project like that in White Sulfur, so you can call it anything you want. I will know what you mean.
All right, there you go, that makes it easy. We've also met, like I said, with your dad, with the rest of the commission, with the mayor, the city council. So we've been well and very involved in this. Years ago, we passed the first resolution, other than you guys, supporting Tintina back then, as well as White Sulfur Springs, Mar County, and the mine. So we are on record. So we are on record supporting the potential economic growth that this will bring, not only you guys, but also Broadwater County through spillover and ancillary development growth. So with this, you know, in meeting with the San Fire attorneys over the years, yeah, they've been planning on this for a long time, they have a strategy, I'm sure they developed and have tweaked between then and now. My question as far as intervening, you mentioned that it's important to have as many local entities as possible. What other cities and counties have you reached out to? I know there's several counties and cities in the same position as Townsend and Broadwater County.
We've reached out to Wheatland and Harlotown. I haven't gotten on their commission schedule at this time, so I don't have a date for you on that. And we've reached out not to the, I was advised to reach out to like the Great Falls Development Council and kind of, sort of learn what, you know, Cascade County may do before approaching them, and similarly with Park County. So those are the other entities that we've approached, but haven't gotten this far yet with them at this time.
And would they all be interveners?
They may be if they choose to do so. You know, it's, that would be, at this point, because of the way that the lawsuit was filed by the environmental groups, anybody that's not, wasn't part of the original is considered an intervenor. But what Corey and I are talking about doing is, you know, just with Mar and Broadwater, is that, you know, we would be filing the same, we would have, you know, our positions would be very, very similar. And at this point, Corey and I can't even identify an issue where they, Broadwater's county would, Broadwater County's position would be different than Mar County. So everything that we're going to be doing is going to be pretty much together. So there's a couple of benefits to that. We're not, we're not creating additional work for the judge in that he would have to read the same points from different attorneys, you know, from just a slightly different vantage point. And also just that it, but it still has the weight of, you know, the local governments that are intervening. So you'd be, you'd be the first non-Mar County, though, if that goes forward.
Okay, so Mar County would be lead, right?
Correct.
Have you, is there an opportunity for a friend of the court instead of an intervene for Broadwater County? You mentioned Great Falls Development Council, of course, there's a number of those that I'm sure would be willing to support. All the cities involved, so Townsend, Livingston, Belt, all those counties as well, chambers of commerce, local economic development, business, you know, the list goes on and on. What is the opportunity of that instead of an intervene?
The lower court, I'm not familiar with that being common. I'd have to check the rules to be sure, but I think that the friend-of-the-court type thing comes into play at the appellate level more commonly. So, you know, if you're intervening at that point with a friend-of-the-court type thing, the lower court record at that point is fixed, it just is what it is. And so I think because of the work that I'm planning on doing, you know, the arguments should be in place for those other entities to go ahead and do an amicus-type brief. But I think the earlier you're involved as an intervener, the more control you have over the record and can put things in there for the lower court to consider that if we do not raise them, and the lower court can't be heard in the Supreme Court.
Okay. Just a couple more points, or questions, I guess. Townsend, have the, has the mayor and the council been talked to about this as well?
Not by me.
Okay. And has the commission talked with you, Bert, about the Hard Rock Mining Coalition with Mako and their reaction and voice of support?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so have you been in contact with the chair then?
I have not. That's been, that's been through the commission, as far as I know.
Okay, all right. I have a couple of concerns, and I'm going to share those with you.
Sure.
And the first one is, you said this is very time-consuming, it's going to be a lot of work specifically for Corey, because he is in Broadwater County and we are the Broadwater County Commission, also expensive. And I know you guys help each other out a lot, you guys being county. With the concerns of time-consuming, a lot of work, expenses, and the issues we've had over the years with Corey telling us how busy he is, he can't keep up with the workload, I am concerned about this being too much for that office. So that would be my first concern. My second concern is that we should be working on mitigation for this coming, because I think, you know, based on how thorough the whole process has been, I think most people are thinking this is coming at some point. We should be working with Townsend and the mayor and the city council on mitigation, how we're going to make sure that everything runs smoothly on this side of the mountain. If this intervention is to defend private property rights of the mine property owners, I'm not sure how that helps or benefits the citizens of Broadwater County more than mitigation efforts, which would be more of a policy decision. And my third concern is that I reached out to Jerry Zigg and Nancy Schlep, and I don't have an affirmative from them yet. Jerry wants to talk over the phone, which we're going to do today. Unfortunately, this was added to the agenda late Thursday, so I didn't have time to coordinate with Jerry before today. But I'd like to know from San Fire directly what they expect of this. And I think we, as commissioners, need to know, again, what's, what's the benefit for Broadwater County? Corey can work with you all he wants, but for us to make a policy decision, we need to have it strong in hand, why spending this kind of time, resources, is going to help Broadwater County citizens. So, yeah, I'm absolutely in support of the help, I'm not so sure about the rest of it. So I would like a little time to make sure that I get a chance to talk with Jerry before making the decision. And I think that's all I have for you, Bert, and I'm open to anything you can share.
Thanks. So I think, just to take your first point first, and Corey's been very clear with me from the start that this would be Mar County's obligation to carry the laboring ore, so to speak. And so he and I have worked on that and have, as Corey said, have a history of working together. So I'm not concerned about that, I think, in terms of it being too, too hard of a, or too much of an impact on Corey's office. I can't speak to the rest of his workload. I know that everybody that I talk to on the county attorney side is pretty well swamped with everything that's gone on this year. So it's a concern, I think, that is absolutely valid to bring up and to address. What I can say is that Corey has been very honest and upfront with me, and I think, you know, our conversation last week was, you know, I said, I'm not expecting much, and Corey said, good, you won't be disappointed then. And so I certainly understand that. I would also add that another person that I believe, you know, Jerry Zigg or Nancy would put you in touch with is the, is their team from Holland and Hart, the lead counsel there being Bill Mercer. And he would be another good one to talk to if they don't, you know, without talking with Jerry first, because of course Bill will have to bill them, so, you know, for talking with you. But I think that might be another resource to answer some of the questions or concerns of what they're looking for. But basically, Tintina and the DEQ are going to be dealing with the bulk of the case, which if, when you read the complaint, is the scientific findings and the administrative procedures portion of it. What we want to have in front of the Supreme Court when they're reviewing this decision isn't just the bare science, but also the real-world impact, I think, for all of central Montana, not just Mar County and White Sulfur Springs, of what this kind of, the good and bad. I mean, there, I think that the commissioners and the council people in White Sulfur, you know, have all recognized that there are going to be some impacts on the town and the county, but that the impacts far, far, the positive impacts far, far outweigh those negative impacts. And that Tintina or, you know, the Black Butte Copper Project have been very good partners with the, with the city and the county in bringing forward some, a project that is, we're hoping is going to be sort of a model for natural resource development in the United States going forward. So I think, you know, it benefits, in my mind, it really, there will be real-world benefits for Broadwater County as the, with jobs and development and, you know, we're going to be having a lot of those impacts as the work ramps up, which is really kind of, right now, we're just at the construction phase, you know, and so it's, we're not seeing it yet. It's kind of two years down the line when we're going to really start to see a lot of the folks that would be coming in for a, you know, 18-year to, you know, 20-year project. So it's, we're just at the very start. So I think there's time, from a policy standpoint, to start to prepare for those impacts. You're not going to see a lot of those right now, so I think there's time to be, to address those as well.
Can I follow up on that a little? And so I guess I would echo what Bert says, but keep in mind that if the county, if Broadwater and Mar are interveners, there is a role to play for the, for us, there's a little difference than the parties that are currently in it. We don't want the environmental plaintiffs to basically use impacts on communities as a boogeyman without a voice there saying, no, you know, not only is it, not only can we address those impacts, but there's all these positive things that are coming, going to come about, families coming here, employment, you know, the revenue, all those things. So I think, I think it's important to have a role for the counties to do that. I also think it's important, that's why we're here today, for it to be not just Mar County by itself. I think it's important to have another county that isn't the site of the mine that's saying this is positive. And for all the reasons, Commissioner Overton, that you've been on the record supporting it and the resolutions that have passed, and this county has generally been supportive of the mine, you know, we are, we're a mining county, and the more track record of success that mining projects can have in surviving litigation, that could benefit us down the road if there's a development of a large project in Broadwater County. But, so I certainly think it's in this county's best interest to be on board. I don't really think there's going to be any significant expense or cost. I mean, intervening parties, we're not going to be out there hiring our experts and all that stuff. I mean, that's, that work's already been pretty well done. I'm not at all worried about doing this project. I'm flippantly and jokingly saying, Bert, you're on your own. But I mean, I've done a lot of these cases, and I'm, and so I'm certainly, when needed, I'm happy to jump in and help out, but times if I'm, if I'm busy, maybe Bert's, Bert's going to be the lead guy anyway, whether we're in or out. I mean, we're not really adding more work to his load. What we're adding is probably greater benefit resulting from his workload. And, I mean, the mine leadership's been supportive of this. I mean, we've, we've talked to their counsel, I've met with Bill a couple times on this. They're not going to object to us intervening as a party. So that's, that's their, their official position's going to be in support of us intervening. So I think it's, to use a phrase that's often thrown around here, I think it's a win-win.
Well, Bert, as far as my questions go, you do set my mind at ease. I think some of the points made about this being an across-the-board issue and the fact that Tintina will be able to show how to mine right, that's kind of been our stance and our opinion with this from the beginning, which is why it was so easy for the commission to be on board and unanimously. So I would really strongly encourage continued coordination with the Hard Rock Rock Mining Coalition, because I think that'll hold a lot of weight in showing that the impacts, positive, economic, development, all that, will be spread throughout the counties surrounding Mar County. But I do want a chance to talk to Jerry, and I would like, is there an MOU proposed? Is there a letter proposed, or is this more of a, we just want the commissioners' blessing to work together? Because I guess, depending on what the actual ask is, it makes it a whole lot easier to say yes. If this is just a, hey, we just want your blessing to work together, that's easy.
So I'll answer that. I want to, there's something, you brought up something that I forgot to address earlier. I once represented a group of eight plaintiff intervenors against an environmental group on a federal lawsuit, three of which were counties, and it was way too big of a group. It was like herding cats. And getting decisions on the lawsuit was taking forever. So too big of a group is unwieldy. I think two or two counties, maybe three at the most, is, then you can, you can have a unified litigation strategy, you can make decisions rapidly, you can get things done. I would not, I would not, and there may be, as Bert said, opportunities if this goes to the Supreme Court, there may be opportunities for the coalition or different organizations to throw in an amicus brief. But as far as in the district court, I would caution against too big of a group, because I think that can undermine your effectiveness. The, generally, when we say, when we come and say, hey, we're basically asking for a vote saying, yes, authorize Broadwater County to intervene as a defendant intervener in the case in cooperation with Mar County, then basically, we would be, we'd be two parties with unified legal interest, and, you know, the legal team would be, would be Bert as lead and myself as second. And if we hit a point in the lawsuit where maybe there is some weird thing that happens, and we need to come back to the commissions and to go, hey, you know, how do you want to handle this, then we'll do that. Those will be most likely closed-door legal strategy decisions, because we're, we're in litigation against someone that has, they're not an open-door litigant, if you will. But if, in the event that there's no earth-shaking things, it's basically going to be periodic litigation updates for the two counties, and we're moving in that direction. With the legal advocacy position that we're suggesting is, in support of the DEQ granting of the permit for the mine, and in support of the, is the general local government support for the mine, its impacts and its benefits for the community. And I'll let Bert add more detail to that, because he may have, I don't know if you want to flesh out a resolution, whatever's helpful to you, I'll let you address that.
Yeah, no, so what, I can just, you know, what we did in Mar County was a, was a simple resolution, and I think that works, and I think that would work for Broadwater if they're so interested. And it's, you know, it was, it was basically the resolution of the board of the county commissioners authorizing the county attorney to intervene in litigation regarding the Black Butte Copper Project. And it just was that the, on the basis that the commissioners were concerned that their, their interests weren't adequately represented by the state or the mine itself, and so felt that their independent interests needed to be represented in the litigation, and that they believed that it was vital for the economy of Mar County. the economy of MAR County, and that they believed that they, based on the revenues and the economic development, believed that they had a standing to be an intervenor party in the lawsuit. So that's the mechanism that I'm relying on in MAR County, and what I think would make sense for Broadwater. But that's really Cory's call.
Yeah, I think that makes sense that we could, we could draft something like that. And if the commission wants to give us the go-ahead, we could draft it and have it at your next meeting for vote and signature. And Bert wouldn't have to come down for a second meeting. We could just, unless there's, you know, more questions, we could probably try to address all we can today, so you're not traveling repeatedly.
Yeah. And if there's a meeting that you have after, after speaking with Jerry, if there's other follow-up questions, you can, you know, email, call, whatever, we'll get them addressed.
For next week, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that this be placed on the agenda, that we have a copy of the resolution before the meeting to meet rights of participation. And I don't see a reason for Bert to come back, although we like having you. But, yeah, if, if Jerry's half as, as positive as you guys think he will be, then I see absolutely no problem. I don't see how a responsible can, decision can be made without, one, having the document in front of us to review it, and, two, just following up with getting some questions answered. So I don't think it'd be appropriate to vote today without that document in front of us.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think there's some public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim Ravendall, resident of Broadwater County, back in front of the, what's going on in our local community here again. As a logging industry, part of that for more years than I can probably remember, our natural resource industry here in Broadwater County has been directly connected with MAR County since the early days of mining. There's gold in them, there are hills. And as a industry proponent, I worked with Montana Multiple Use Association right here in Broadwater County. And half of our members of that organization were in MAR County at that time. And those efforts for 15-plus years right here at home was to enhance our natural resource industries from mining and logging. When I first moved here, there was 27 different mines in Broadwater County. Look at what we have now. It's disgusting. We have no ability to enhance our development and our community, because we aren't producing anything except, well, I will be honest, more government. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that this body enhances that from our position of the mine going in across the hill, because that sets that stage to continue moving forward. If we fail to do so, the same trend of eco-extremism, which is a term I use regularly, will continue to rule. And we will lose. If, we must step up. And as our commissioners here in Broadwater County, I urge you, don't hesitate to stand up for the people of this great community, this great area of Montana where we live. Enhance our industries that do produce the revenues that we need in order to meet the demands of the tomorrow. So with that, I thank you for coming over the hill. I really do think that we, if we don't stand up here in Broadwater County and join every effort that we can with MAR County and Jefferson County, et cetera, across the board, we're missing the boat. And as a citizen, I think it's a tragedy to even consider stepping away from that opportunity. So with that, I could go on, but I'll just leave it there. Please sign on and don't hesitate to do so.
Right. Thank you, Tim. Anyone else?
Tim Poole, I 100% support what's going on here and all. I just had one question. By joining in on this, would there be any, just so we're aware, unintended financial involvement? Could we be sued and obligated to pay out a settlement, or?
Not that I'm aware. I mean, unintended consequences are by their nature unintended. But I, I've analyzed that, and I've asked the same question of folks like Cory, and I've found anybody that said, oh, yes, this is where you're on the line. It's, it's a, no. It's really nothing that I've seen.
Yeah. Well, again, I support this, but just don't want any surprises that's going to kick our butt later down the road. All right. Thank you.
Would you like us to draft a resolution and prep for next week?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I guess, is that, is that the decision? Is that everybody's decision?
Yeah, that would be my suggestion, yes.
Do you agree with that, Laura?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Perfect. We'll get you on the agenda and we'll go from there.
Okay. Sounds good.
Should be emailed at what time. I'll put it on my calendar. If I'm needed, contact me beforehand. But I plan on not coming, but I'll put it on my calendar just in case I should.
Okay. Sounds good.
Bert, thank you very much for coming over.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could we have that resolution in time to have that on the website for the public to view it as well?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it probably Wednesday or so. Probably get it to you by Wednesday.
Okay. They said they'll have it by Wednesday.
Or Thursday. Or Friday.
Well, we like to have it as soon as we can.
I'll say tomorrow, because I can make promises and not have to look you.
All right. Well, the sooner the better. Let's put it that way, right?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Definitely. It's Wednesday noon for the resolution.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else? Matt, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Laura, do you have anything?
Just a quick question. We had a brief discussion last week about the Board of Health. I would like very much to add appointing, I believe it was J.J. Connor, that put his name in for an alternative spot on the Board of Health, and then to also put forward a formal request to carry pride, if she's still the one doing the trainings for Boards of Health, and put together a structure, so that it is understood by all that the Board of Health is not advisory, but is a powerful decision-making body, and make sure that everybody is trained. And then we can address any kind of changes that you guys want. But I think we need to have a public process for it, and that would be my request for the next agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think we agree that the training's important for our board, and we'll move forward with that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And then we can put together a solid plan that's understood and followed by everybody.
Sure. All right. Anything else?
Fill out your census report. You got two days.
Yeah, we gotta do that. That's right. Yay.
I thought the court actually, you know, the ruling extended till the end of October.
Now, that was set on Friday as well, but I think Mike and I kind of looked for it, because I looked for it too.
I think that's where I heard.
I've been looking for the, for the census update, and I haven't seen an update or anything about it being extended.
Judge out of California, as I understand, made a ruling that extended that. But, I mean, I, that's all, it was on the news.
Okay.
Yeah, because we looked this morning, because Mike and I are really into the census system. I didn't, I didn't come across one thing. The only thing that I did read, it said it had two days left. So that was the only thing that I came across. And that was on the actual census.com. So I didn't see anything that said it extended.
I just heard it on the news. I looked it up.
Okay. Well, it might be beneficial if they do. All right.
It would be.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
If that's it, I guess we're adjourned at 11:20. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for your comments.